Uh, involvement with the town. Mike is still getting the uh rural water um magazine. So I was reading through.
It's unchangeable.
I was reading through.
It gets it off a lot of stuff too.
Well, I got it at the office too, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I've called him and if I ask him who is on there, it's just the mayor, Ryan, and me. And everybody's off. Yeah, and then all of a sudden I get everything.
Well, anyway, they, the Division of Drinking Water is now requiring um someone be certified in the cross-connection training. And they are doing that at the convention um in February. It's, it's not cheap. It's, it's like five hundred and sixty-five dollars to buy the manual and get the training. Then you have to take the test and become certified. But um by the end of two thousand and twenty, uh I think our level of water company is supposed to have a certified person. Uh if it's, if we get an extension, it would be the end of next year, two thousand and one. So um anyway, that's just something that I don't know that any, everybody was aware of that. I wasn't until, until just, you know, I was reading through that magazine. So I don't know if anybody is designated to do those kinds of things. Um we did all that when we were involved, but um I don't know that you have to get this done at the convention or where the hell that's made. Um I think you can probably do it at a different time of the year. But anyway, it will cost, you know, probably six hundred dollars to get that done.
Probably a good thing to have under our bill anyway to deal with.
It's required, you know, it will um.
I think we actually have a couple of years to do that. It's a thousand unless you hit two thousand and twenty and then it drops to five hundred in a couple of years, two thousand and twenty-two, five hundred.
I thought it said two thousand and one. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, just so that, you know, for budget purposes and trying to designate who's gonna be responsible for that. Um you're supposed to be checking cross-connections. Um when I was involved, it was ten percent of your connections every year. Um I don't know what it is now, but um.
Still ten percent. We do, we do monitor those meters. There's certainly more that could be done, but we do monitor those meters.
I know we are doing it, but like I'm saying, they're getting much more restrictive now and making sure you, you document this in more accuracy and training.
Yeah, I don't disagree, just but it's not like we're not doing any, you know.
Oh, no, I know.
We do better, absolutely, but we're way ahead of where we were five years ago.
I understand.
So.
The, the main, um our big main three, you know, like the school district, the church, the county, they didn't like me because I sent them their paperwork for cross-connection and backflow and they ignored me. And I finally got on the phone, said, guess what, you're being shut off in ten days. And they're like, what? It's like, get this stuff to me. I have to get it to the state. I have to have, and then, boy, I had that stuff immediately, but they're like, we don't, haven't done this before. I'm like, exactly, but you have to do it. And they're just like, so sometimes I'm a thorn in people's side. Oh, wait, most of the time. So that it is happening and we are keeping documentation and Ryan keeps me informed of whose houses that they've checked, you know, so. So we are doing, like he said, is, things are rolling and doing really good.
Yeah. Uh I have a question back on that acquisition of Daniel Water shares. I wonder if Ryan can help me with this. Back a year or so ago, there was a question on your uh water of Stormhaven. And it showed right of sixty acre feet.
Right.
And that was covered by fifteen shares of water.
Correct.
Which would put us about two hundred and twenty-five shares short.
Yes.
Has that ever been resolved or is that why you're trying to buy water?
Um well, that's probably some of the loose end we're gonna discuss.
So, no, no, that hasn't been resolved. The, the town turned it over to their legal counsel and I have it in the, in the loop, but I couldn't, I, I couldn't make heads or tails of why fifteen shares were evidence for sixty acre feet. And yet it was signed by everybody and so I, I gave up and passed it on to people who are smarter than I am.
So you're not trying to buy shares to make up, to hold your water right up there?
We're trying to buy shares for water needs of the whole town, but not necessarily that issue that we're wanting to discuss.
Would, would you lose that water right if, if you didn't have the shares?
No, there's, there are other water rates that, that the municipal company owns that would allow that system to keep operating. I think what we're looking at by buying shares is that we look at how many connections we have now and the connections we see in the future. And we, we are going to be short of water here in the not-too-distant future as we keep adding. And so that's the need to purchase water is to make sure that our water shares exceed how much water we're pumping. Partly is equal to it, I guess, at the end, but exceed it for a while while we're growing. We don't wanna be behind.
So, so we looked at build-out and we're just about, well, we're over half, but we're not at build-out. We won't have enough water to service the entire town.
Well, I just saw your acquisition, I thought.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something to do with that.
Yeah, so that's why we're, that's why we're doing that. We're, anybody who wants to sell, we're doing that for change application, acquiring those to, to do a change use into our well so we can pump out and service the town.
So I wouldn't say it's because of that issue, although if that issue goes poorly for us, then that would necessitate, you know, ma- make a bigger need to buy water, you know. We need, we need more water faster.
It's so you lose it.
But, but if we, assuming that goes well and we do, do get that resolved at sixty acre feet, the town still needs additional water a- as we grow.
Any other questions?
Go back to your question. I'm, I'm not worried about showing beneficial use for the municipal company. We, we've done the math and we're way short of where we ultimately need to be.
Uh moving on to item number eleven, which would be Stormhaven. Any particular issues there? I know we had another sewer clean out um on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. And so the calls kinda went out and took a day to get somebody up there or something, but they did and it got cleaned out. It's the same issue, the same reasoning, it's a clogging issue and should be good for hopefully four, six, eight months, so.
I think, I think we're gonna have to look at raising the rates there. Uh if they continue to flush wipes down and it keeps plugging and you end up with a thousand dollar bill every six months to jet that thing out. Is it, what is it, eighteen hookups? It's a hundred and eighty bucks a piece every time they jet at a break even.
They just not working too much now, it's all grinding.
Yeah. So we got, I mean, we're gonna have to look at it. Until they can change what's being flushed up there, it's not gonna change. Those wipes do not break down.
Do you want me to send that paper out again? I mean, to remind them, I mean, it's not working before, you know, but do you want me to?
Uh I can't remember which.
You just showed them what they can put in there down.
And I'll start them, start the year off again, trying to remind them. And maybe even a little less, many of them know they, you know, Christmas Day it got flushed out again, so trying to keep that from happening. This would be nice if you could do that.
I mean, I'm almost to the point where I think we set a public hearing to raise the sewer rates and they will come and we'll be able to talk to them. But I mean, if it discontinues, we're upside down in that company and it just continues. And it's, it's got us to the hole.
What do we, is the charge now?
What's that?
What is the charge now for sewer?
Twelve or?
Forty-five.
And it's forty?
Water's forty-five.
Yeah, water's forty-five.
The sewer's forty.
So when up, what, however many months, three years?
Yeah, we did, we raised it because we knew we was, we was dealing with some issue, but the issues continue. And I, I mean, if you're up there on Christmas Eve, it's a great time.
I do wanna think also about a moratorium for that, uh we need to um look at a little.
We're, we're really under a moratorium, just the state says you can't do those systems anymore.
On the sewer side.
Yeah, the sewer side.
On the water side, I think it's.
Just lifted.
Up for discussion. Well, the council hasn't lifted it, but I think that we've got enough new things in place that's worth a discussion. That the, the water should be revisited. The sewer, like I said, the, the state prevents us from expanding, like I said. So there's historical hookups on lots that it was originally plotted for that we can continue to use, but we can't go make that system bigger than it already is.
And what about an abandoned use that maybe somebody wanted to hook back up as part of that sewer?
Great question. I don't have an answer for you.
That was a good answer.
Look at those, look at those charges um that are incurred. Blowing those, that sewer system out, back to just the users of that system.
That would have to do that through the rates.
It, it has its own budget, so to their point like, you know, we need to raise the rates because if we look at what we're spending and what we're gaining, it's not working, so we need.
So we need to look at it over the last year or two, what it's doing and then just increase the rates accordingly.
If you could get them to change their habits, I don't think you'd be doing it as often, but.
Just last year, we did it three times.
Yeah. And I think a thousand was the least of that, I think we want to pare the amount.
Fifteen's kind of the mark and they took out sixteen hundred gallons.
Yeah, so you got eighteen people who are, that's quite, quite a healthy chunk and it's no fun.
No.
Person where that manhole, where it all comes out, doesn't like it either on Christmas Eve.
No. So I think we oughta be thinking about looking at holding a public hearing and looking at the rates again. And if, I mean, until they, they'll self-police themselves at some point or else we'll be jetting it three times a year.
Well, we're all on our own separate septic tanks and we're liable for our own.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know how.
The council, like I said, have meeting for that, uh public hearing for that now or?
Yeah, we do that on the same one we, yeah.
Could, could we put the numbers together first and, and see what we're working with?
For our numbers or comparable numbers or all the numbers?
No, I mean, what the expenses are as opposed to um what we're revenues and see where um, you know.
Where it needs to be.
Yeah, where it needs to be. I, I was wondering about that too. I don't know when the last time rates were raised.
It was very long ago, we had a buddy group here.
Well, I'm with you though, if you could control behavior, we definitely.
That seems to be the only thing that brings up.
We've really tried notices and.
Well, so, yeah, maybe it's time to urge the money in.
I don't know how.
A special assessment or something.
I don't know how else to do it. I, I wish that they could, I mean, we sent out the notices, don't do this, don't do this.
So it's not everybody in Stormhaven that's on?
No, no, eighteen of those hook in, so it's, it's limited. But yeah, unfortunately, it goes around three times and they never see it again and they don't care, so. I don't know how else to do it. I mean, I, we probably all had that discussion at our own offices.
We do.
Would the council like to set a date for that?
Yeah, let's set one for March after our.
And then look at the expenses and everything next month and see what we're bringing in, because it looks like it's about a hundred and seventy bucks a household if we're spending three thousand a year, about that.
Just on clean out?
Just on clean out or housing, so I mean, so I think we need to look at those expenses and revenues.
We'd have a crowd.
It's gonna, it's gonna be.
Come on, it's a good time and get us down to look at it.
And if you can get us to look at stuff.
I think, I think it'd be a good thing too to, to be able to point out all the benefit that the town has done for the Stormhaven as far as grants and.
All the things that we've done, you know, I mean, the history of what's gone on up there, if you've been involved, you know how much we've put, effort we've put into that and expense that we've, we've tried to help with.
So it'd be a good thing to be prepared with those numbers for the year.
So we had a motion for March?
We have a motion yet.
How many motion for March?
March public hearing for.
I'll second that.
First and second for public hearing in March for water rates.
Yeah, and the Stormhaven one.
Any discussion on it?
Yeah, uh we're gonna have Ryan's group put those numbers together and charts that are sizable.
I can do that, it ought to get a Mary on the budget numbers, but I can do that.
Great.
As we find out, I mean, three thousand's what we're talking about for the emergency jet and there's a lot of other annual costs that can be incurred, that we're supposed to incur to try to prevent other things from going bad.
Okay, it's total cost?
And I don't know if that is a whole gun.
Okay.
It absolutely leaves us nothing for capital replacement and we have failures. I mean, we're just in the hole, you know.
No, that has to be dealt with, I'm sure.
Be nice to be able to tell them, you know, that the town is working as hard as it can too to make this work.
Some know, but most don't.
I know.
Okay, um so then motion for.
Yeah.
Oh, oh. We added, we added Ryan on there. Did you make that motion and then add Ryan or do you want to start over? Ryan give the numbers.
And you want that at the February meeting, for the second meeting?
Yeah.
February, if you can pull that one off.
The motion is to have the numbers ready to compare the costs versus our expenditures and uh Ryan will build it up with Mary and have the figures for, for March. That's the motion. We have a second?
I second that.
Second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on March.
That's why, that's why we're popular.
Okay, item number twelve, total of council meeting minutes, November fourth, two thousand, two thousand and nineteen. Any other questions on that? It's a time to get like that prior, so sometime they go kind of fast here.
Can I make a motion to approve whoever these guys get done looking at them? Give us a second.
Can I ask, is it the November minutes, is it more of December minutes that you're looking?
Uh these are December second, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah.
Keep waiting for a second, go on.
I am waiting for a second.
I was up there.
Oh.
Okay, so it's Heber Valley Flight Path.
See, that one it says, huh? That's what we agreed he said.
I couldn't remember, I looked at it today.
So we'd like to make that one.
Yes, okay.
Can everybody hear that?
I did not.
On line item five.
The website uh address is Heber Valley Flight Path dot com. And thank you for getting that on, uh Daniel.
Yeah.
So I looked at it and I'm getting emails now.
I'm gonna mistake. There's going to be.
We'll never get off that list now.
It's in front of me, but there are gonna be some meetings coming up at the end of January for the public. I don't think it's the.
I think it's the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Yeah, at the police station, Heber City Police Station and.
No, that's my meeting, but the um public meeting will be at the midway or um Heber.
Oh, Heber Valley Elementary, you're right.
Heber Elementary the following, so I think it's on a Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Uh twenty-eighth is a Tuesday, so twenty-ninth.
So show up. The, take, yes, the takeoff meeting.
The off meeting?
Yes. It's the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth is Wednesday.
And it's a, it's six o'clock.
We have a first except the minute the meeting is written, I think we have a change to. Line item, Black Path is objected there.
I second that, do you have a second?
Want to change that, did you vote with the add that Black Path?
Yeah.
The motion is to accept with the change of Black Path. You have a second?
I second that.
You have a second? Any discussion on that? None? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
I'm staying. That was good.
I was a member of the public.
Okay. That's approved. Quarter's office warrants approvals, announcements, and then some of town order, Mary. Corey, put it down.
Okay. Comcast, we don't want anything with um, the N A hot dozen for August rent, two hundred. Smith and Harvickson, this is for November for general matters, one thousand six oh nine. Other legal issues, two thousand nine seventy-four fifty. Baby and Bangkok for Schultz State, forty-nine. Computer nerds, one thousand three eighty-seven fifty. Wasatch wave uh for Title Eight Resolution Thirty-seven. Meeting approval, eighty-three twenty-four. Uh Resolution for twenty-eighty-one, another resolution for eighteen fifty. Utah State Division of Finance for the bond series, two thousand eleven, six thousand six hundred and seventy. State of Utah for quarterly, sixteen seventeen. Smith and Harvickson Legal Matter, thirteen twenty-five. General Matters, four fifty-seven fifty. Mountain Land Act of Associations, annual fees, eight twenty-eight. T O Engineering Planning, nine hundred. Bangters, five sixty-seven fifty. Witz, eighty-six fifty. Baird's, ninety-nine. Lloyd's, two ninety. Glodowski, one twenty-two fifty. Mitchell, one twenty, total seventeen thousand eight sixty-one sixteen, or sorry, eight, seventeen thousand eight sixty-one seventy-two. Public Works, uh Eric's Hours, L G M's for snow removal, one hundred. Wasatch County Snow Removal, three thousand three thirty-one. Blue State Quarterly, seventy-seven oh four. Mountainland Supply, thirty-five thirty-nine, for a total of four thousand one eighteen forty-three. Council.
May I just, um, on the L G M, just curious, how many times did he plow?
Um it showed once, I believe. Yeah, and that was for, I think it was for December. Um Council payroll, commission payroll for a total of twenty-nine thousand four oh two fifty-three. Daniel Municipal Water, century being data charge, forty-seven seventy-five. Com, uh Heber Light and Power, three fifty-four twenty. Heber, or sorry, computer nerds, um three hundred. Chemtech Ford, twenty. T O Engineering for the engineering, three fifty. Sampling, one fifty-seven fifty for a total of one thousand two twenty-nine forty-five. And you have payroll for a total of one thousand nine seventy-six ninety-five. Stormhaven Water, Dominion Energy, nine oh eight. Heber Light and Power, one twenty-five forty-four. Computer Nerds, three hundred. A one septic, six fifty. Chemtech Ford, forty. T O Engineering for engineering, one fifty-seven fifty. Sampling, one seventy-five for a total of one thousand eight fifty-seven oh two. And then payroll for a total of two thousand two forty-four fifty-two.
Looking out, council.
Make a motion when we accept the warrants uh December twenty nineteen.
You have a motion?
On the January sixth, twenty-fourth.
Excuse me, I second that.
Personal second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Warrant pad approved. Little bit of budget, okay.
Okay, so just really quick too, the Census Bureau brought in some information if anybody's looking for uh part-time people that want to help with the Daniels area. Um he said it starts around sixteen dollars an hour. You can kind of work your own hours. They are going to be hiring around mid-March and he said it takes usually about two months, so if anybody is interested, there's some information available.
It's really funny, you get to go to everybody's house and knock on their door and then talk to them.
Fill this out.
Um okay, quarterly. So for um total revenues for general were forty-one point twenty-one percent. And for uh overall expenditures were seventy point forty-nine.
Mary, will you please include the um the warrants that we just approved?
Yes.
And we haven't gotten very much property tax yet.
No, 'cause I just got that check, so it actually just went in. Oh, yeah.
Do you remember the other ones?
Like twenty-five thousand. Okay, operating, we are on expenditures, twenty-eight point oh two percent. And. Um expenditures, we've got five hundred and thirty-eight percent. And then on Stormhaven, it's the revenue seventy-one point four three and expenditures, we are eighty-four point eight one.
Any other questions on some of the higher percentages? A couple of line items there. Oh, I'm sorry.
Having worked with the Polaris software before, you can add categories. If you're wanting more specific information on the sewer, might for the next budgeting purposes, make a new category for sewer repairs or something that is more obvious.
Correct. Good idea. That way we'll have to look it up again, I'll be right there.
Right.
Great.
Yeah.
You can see that our grants and things will truly mess with our budget, huh?
And hopefully they'll continue to.
Yes, it's a good thing.
One other question, Chip. What do you foresee for the legal expenses? We're only halfway through the year and almost twice what you budgeted.
And we're not half-done.
I was gonna say we are half-done.
We're not half-done.
Well, we're close.
With our legal sense.
Um no, that's something that certainly is reactionary and uh we'll see. I, I've gotten rid of actually quite a couple of, three of them that uh taken care of or something, wrapping up the other two, but I, that was gonna be an amendment at the end. For sure on that line, Adam.
Yeah, when they said that we had a little bit of extra money, we have a spot to put it.
You know that? As you gotta remember, I mean, next year, I wouldn't think we'd have as many this year, but a lot of people, I mean, if you turn somebody down, they're gonna see you not even turn. Anyway.
No, you know, I would, I don't see that going down. I continue to see this.
That line item go up?
Yep. I think that we have more and more coming into town, I don't have the answer as well for everything. We can see why the municipalities will cave. Spend those ten thousand dollars, no force of zoning ordinance, pretty expensive ordinance.
Any questions on the quarterly budget report?
So I probably should bring this up now. Um I asked Mary not to put in uh some items in the warrants and also in our budgets. That I think we, when we go into closed session, we'll discuss that. There's some information that's getting out to the public that I think is protected by our closed meeting and I think that that needs to be curbed. And it wouldn't be there to start with, except for the council asks for those items to be broken now. And so that's why they're in there. I think we need to be more general if the public's allowed to view our warrants at the time that we're approving them. Because it's uh on our legal end, it's causing some difficulties and more expense. So we'll discuss that in, in closed meeting, I just wanted to head to the phone now. So what are you, have we done?
I just, you know, just to go still looking if we move on or rather move on, Mary, just.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to have to spend some time.
Oh, yeah.
You love that stuff.
Those are all night.
So then that would, Mary, that takes care of everything on your side?
Yes.
Just got item number thirteen. Council, I believe we should go into closed session this evening, so shall I make a motion for that?
Can I make a motion to go on a regular session and go into closed session?
Perfect. Yeah, go through that.
Will you state the purpose?
Uh, it will be for legal, personal, property acquisition.
All of those? No, you need to state which one of those are all three of them.
It will, it will be legal, personal, and property acquisition.
Okay, all three of those.
That's how they're on there.